Call to order a special meeting for the Normal Local Liquor Commission. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
First order of business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from March 21st, 2022.
With approval?
Second.
Thank you. Changes or comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The minutes are approved. We have item four, which is a 2022-2023 liquor license application for the Normal Corn Belters Baseball LLC at 1,000 West Rab in Normal, and they are requesting a Class D liquor license, all liquor on-premises consumption at 1,000 West Rab Road.
With approval?
Second.
Discussion on this item. Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The item is approved. That concludes our business. A motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. We are adjourned, and we will start in about two minutes. The Normal Town Council for Monday, May 2nd, 2022. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice pro.
We have one public commenter tonight. That would be Mr. Fensler. If you'd come forward, Mr. Fensler. You've done this enough. I don't have to explain the rules. Whoop, thank you.
Good evening. Doug Fensler, and I haven't been here a while, but good to see you all. On topic tonight, the number eight, the more discussion about uptown building and the following the plan. We've had a recent meeting, a past meeting. The plan was followed, although one thing I wanted to bring awareness to that I don't know why, there hasn't been a citizens' meeting in probably three years, maybe it's been longer. I don't remember the last time it was. That kind of input is always useful as you go forward, whether there is a plan from 10 years ago and it's been updated, whatever the plan is at that time, citizen input on a more regular basis would be very useful, especially as we move forward with having to put down as much as 30% from last week's or two weeks ago, 30% taxpayer money, at least being the number that was thrown out as being spent on that, and we'll see what is for tonight. The one other thing I wanted to bring up as we talk about the trying to talk about the past and what has been done and how it has succeeded or not is a very appropriate when you guys are considering any action, when there's been a like kind of action. And at the last meeting, there was a point, a couple point of facts and a couple points of order that I think were out of order, that they actually, especially the point of order of not talking about the past, that doesn't seem to be appropriate when how have we succeeded or not succeeded, how we've done well and not done well, when we're talking about a very like kind of building that you're talking about. Why would you not consider what you've done in the past? I do also find that, and I hope tonight is different, but the fact that when we don't consider the past seemed that everyone except for Stan seemed to not be considered at all, consider at all the past and what has worked well and not worked well. I would hope that we would consider the past, the restaurant part, and how it's worked, and I don't know all the details of it, but I'm here to listen to those, but not considering the past and how well they worked and how well it's gone from plan has to be considered going forward, and the citizens need a better voice, and those citizens advisory boards was one way that has been neglected. Thank you.
At the request of our presenters tonight, I'm kind of rearranging the schedule and bringing some new business forward before we go to the omnibus agenda, and that's going to be the presentation of Youth on a Mission Advisory Council, and they'd ask to go earlier because a number of them have AP testing this week and they're got a little focus somewhere else, so we're going to let them give their presentation and get back to real business here, not that this isn't. So please come forward.
Hello, everyone. My name is Paige Malloy. I'm a mentor with Youth on a Mission. Today, I put together a couple photos just to tell you about what this project is before our students dive into their presentations. So we started off our program back in October with our retreat weekend. These students were introduced to leadership activities, they brainstormed ideas that could improve our town, and by the end of that weekend, they picked a project that really suit their passions. Sorry. This was an incredible experience for them to build their leadership skills, and while we provided them the tools, they really took it and ran. Of course, we had fun in the process. Ms. Freeman and Kimberly Cummings, the councilwoman, really made a difference in these students' lives, making sure they had fun at every meeting and put a smile on their face during all the serious work. As you can see on the presentation here are the Christmas photos. That was a great break for the students to take a step back from all the stressful work and research they did into really embracing their creativity. But one of the most impactful parts of this program was listening to speakers. These students got to hear from different department heads, hear from the town of Normal, they got to hear from local boards like Ryan Whitehouse from Connect Transit, and they eventually ended up reaching out to these individuals for the projects that they cultivated and brought to you today. We really got to watch their passions grow through listening to these speakers, picking out the parts that stuck with them, reaching out to them down the line to help them out, and then, of course, they're here today. Some of them even got to meet alumni from their high schools. So as you can see on the screen, Ally Spear from the Illinois Farm Bureau and Larissa Armstrong from the Ecology Action Center graduated from Normal West and Normal Community. So these students got to see people who graduated from their high schools and continue every day to work in their local community just to make it a better place. Of course, friendships came along the way with those leadership skills. An individual that you'll see on the screen here is Ben. Ben is the only senior in our program, and unfortunately, due to an emergency, wasn't able to join us today for presentations, but we wanted to give him a special shout out since it will be his last year with us in the program. He did an incredible job and really grew with the program every single visit that we had, and we wanted to make sure that he's hopefully watching with us at home. One more experience these students were given was the opportunity to visit parts of the town that not everybody sees. These photos are from the Normal Fire Department headquarters. We went on a tour with the fire staff, and the students got to ask all the questions that they could possibly think of, and we really appreciate like, we really appreciate going over there and just getting to discuss those topics with them. We also got to take them to different parts of City Hall here so they could sit in your shoes and just kind of cultivate those dreams that they're talking about and bring their passions to life. All the hard work these students put in, from sitting on Saturday morning at 9:00 AM taking notes, to researching their projects, to picking final fonts for these presentations they're about to show you, it all led to this moment, and I'm incredibly proud of all the work they've put in, their commitment to this program. And while this marks the end of their program this year, I know we'll see them do great things in our community for years to come. So thank you to Councilwoman Cummings and the rest of the board or the council for giving me this opportunity to watch them grow, and with that, I'll pass it over to Tracy Freeman.
I'm Tracy Freeman. I teach at Normal West High School. Mr. Preston? Many of you I've worked with over the years. I've taken students all across the country to Iowa. We work with state and local legislatures. We've had council members in our classroom answering student questions. So when I was approached in October about working with students who I did not know, I knew one of the West students, actually two by the end of the program before this began, and asking them to work on state and local issues, starting with a retreat, I was skeptical. I thought, four high schools, they don't know each other, and my first email to Ms. Cummings was, besides, oh, sorry, didn't finish the application, was that is too much time. You're never going to get kids to commit to that much time. And over the weekends, many of you joined us, and I put together just a special thank you. We had connections with some of them. The students learned from each and everyone, if you just want to kind of pass through. For some reason, I put you on there twice for the one Saturday. All the department heads, again, the fire station was the highlight, but I saw something in these students and a passion for state and local that I've never seen in thirty, however many years, we'll leave that number out. And as I retire, that's what's impressed me the most, the fact that the tools that Ms. Cummings brought to this, that she could engage them. Kids don't normally have an interest in state and local, and yet, most of us know this is where their lives are really impacted, and I think those of you who came and shared your time and opportunities and talents with them are going to be so impressed as we are. And again, I just, I know I'm nervous talking to you. I hope you all give them grace, and I'm going to be quiet so that they can do that. But special thank you to the folks also locally who helped us feed them. So, all right? Thank you. With that, we're going to pass it off directly to group one if they want to come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Simone Davis.
My name is Rory Connell.
And this is our Electrical Vehicle Infrastructure Group. Sadly, today, two of our members are not present due to a medical emergency, but they were very passionate and very important parts of this group. For today, we want to talk about over the next 10 years, the availability for EV charging stations that will be easier across Normal, Illinois.
Electricity is considered an alternative fuel under the Energy Policy Act of 1992. Electricity can be produced from a variety of energy sources, including natural gases, coal, nuclear energy, wind energy, and solar energy, just to name a few. In our project, we obviously researched electric vehicles, and we found the two main types, plug-in electric vehicles, also known as PEV, which is an electric vehicle that can be recharged from an external source of electricity or just a wall socket, and then plug-in hybrid electric vehicles, PHEV, which again, contains the rechargeable battery, as mentioned earlier, but also contains one of the aforementioned energy sources.
There are many benefits of having EV. You don't have to spend as much money on gas. You can help the earth be more greener, and it's way more efficient. You can also get diesel emission reduction grants up to $7,500 in tax credit and lots of energy fuel sources from hydropower, solar energy, and natural gases.
There's a lot of existing infrastructure and planning that is in our community, including the Rivian Center, which currently employs 4,400 workers in the town of Normal. And then, in 2021, Governor Prister passed the Reimagining Electric Vehicles Act, REV, which the program was designed to strengthen Illinois EV manufacturing, which is already a hotspot, is already an EV hotspot in the United States, to grow the ecosystem and create a new environment for EV to thrive. Another act passed is the Climate and Equitable Jobs Act, which essentially is a path to 100% cleaner energy. And this act makes the Midwest, Illinois, the first Midwestern state to enact legislation to combat the climate crisis that we are facing today.
Electric cars are known to cut emissions drastically. In the U.S., emissions decreased 11% in 2020. Some short-term and long-term factors are warmer winters and the price changes for our natural gas.
There are also many financial benefits to electric vehicles, such as the previously mentioned electric vehicle federal tax credit. Electric vehicle federal tax credit is given to owners of EV if they fit the following criteria, with a battery of at least five kilowatt hour capacity, an external charging source, and a weight that does not exceed 14,000 pounds. And these credit ranges can start up to $2,500 and even go up to $7,500. Another indirect way of financial benefits is the charging. A lot of people question whether it is cheaper to own electric vehicles, and electric vehicles tend to be more expensive than gas vehicles, but the charging of them is a lot cheaper nowadays, with the Tesla Model X only costing $14.49 for 100 miles.
The reason why this is so important is because of the harmful effect it has, carbon dioxide has on us. It also lowers the ocean's pH levels and can do bad damage to most of our marine life.
There are many challenges that we might face when implementing this, such as location and ease of access. This includes the optimizing the accessibility, visibility, and ease of navigation for these charging facilities, as long as the space requirements. Another challenge is the demand and rate of utilization. This essentially means balancing the demand and supply of EV apparatuses. Once again, another challenge is the cost of land, power supply, and electric vehicle supply equipment that this may use.
The impact EV had on COVID-19 was big. Lots of people said it brought awareness to themselves and sanitary issues. With electric cars, pumping gas is less expensive and dirty. Electric cars, you can do in the comfort of your own home and the serenity of your own space, unlike pumping gases in public areas where you have to worry about the gas and wearing gloves and extra stuff getting on you, affecting you, your home, and your car.
In conclusion, EV technology becoming more increasingly popular with improved batteries and a desire to decrease our carbon emissions. Carbon emissions reductions are of critical importance, which can cause, are of critical importance because it can cause drastic and irreversible effects on our climate. There are also many financial benefits previously stated, like the electric vehicle federal tax credit. The town of Normal could begin transitioning municipal vehicles into electric vehicles. The town can also invest in infrastructure for the town, such as charging stations. Thank you for your time, and I hope you enjoyed our presentation.
Hi, I'm Shloka Ravi-Nutla.
Hi, I'm Richa Shakla.
And I'm Nia Shovin.
Today, we are going to share about something we hope to implement in the town of Normal, which would be the Multicultural Arts Center.
As you listen to our presentation, we feel it is best for you to look into, look in depth into our ideas for the Cultural Diversity Center. We understand that if this center has a plan to move forward, that our ideas will be utilized. We would like the Cultural Diversity Center to be a place of learning for all ages. It is a common misconception that high school students and young adults are immature. We would ask you to eliminate the bias against all young people, and I understand that we too play an important part in this movement in our community. We would like a place to speak up about issues that we feel are pressing in our town of Normal. However, we understand that our idea is a plan that would, in theory, take many years to come to fruition. We ask that you keep an open mind when hearing our hopes, hearing our hopes for the future of our community. We would like everyone to be exposed to the history of other cultures, especially in this town. It is understood that children are taught about culture, but we would like a more inclusive version. We want the community to be brought together through the exposure of often overlooked cultures. By realizing how our town can benefit from a center like this, our community will become more culturally aware and knowledgeable.
Art is something that makes you breathe a different kind of happiness. This quote was said by Annie Albers, who is an American textile artist who brought together traditional craft and art. Especially in a time like now, with lots of conflict happening in our world and our community just recovering from the recent pandemic, we need things that truly make us happy. The global prevalence of anxiety and depression has gone up by 25%, according to a scientific brief released by the World Health Organization. One in six U.S. children now has a mental illness, and anxiety orders are now calmly diagnosed. A place that celebrates everyone and has art that signifies them can help create inclusion for kids and adults who currently don't feel included in our community, as well as make these numbers go down.
Normal, Illinois is predominantly Caucasian, but that does not mean that other cultures are not present. About 11.5% of Normal, Illinois' population is Black or African-American. Now, even though this percentage is almost double that of the Hispanic or Latino people in Normal, Illinois, the Black population is still underrepresented. One of the main goals of the Multicultural Arts Center is to represent marginalized groups. Every person deserves to have their voice heard when speaking up about their culture. There is a lack of education and information about these other cultures and races because their race is not predominant in Normal, Illinois. American Indians and Alaska natives take up only 0.1% of the population in Normal, Illinois. This small number of American Indians and Alaska natives are underrepresented in all aspects, including education and schools. It is known that indigenous people made a large impact on the United States, but what impact did they make on Normal, Illinois or Illinois as a whole? Children are not being taught about the lasting legacy of many races and cultures that are present now in Normal. The public needs to be educated on the customs and cultures of these underrepresented groups so that all people can feel comfortable in their own town. We feel that the Multicultural Arts Center will assist in the spread of cultural awareness. Since there is such a small amount of certain ethnicities and cultures, it becomes hard for them to create a community inside Normal, Illinois. It's important to introduce the majority of citizens to these cultures to further cultural awareness, creating a safer space for all of Normal communities' members.
In regards to the Cultural Diversity Center, I reached out to my AP US history teacher, a distinguished Fulbright scholar and diversity advocate, Dr. Robert Fitzgerald. He stated that he was in full support of this initiative and that it would be an exciting addition to our community.
I reached out to my English teacher, Lauren Chisari. She said, "I believe a multicultural arts center would allow our community to embrace and celebrate cultures from throughout the world, as well as diversity within our own town." Art in all forms also has the potential to foster discussions and connections, which can enrich the lives of all of us who live here. Additionally, examining art from other cultures gives individuals an opportunity to learn about lives and experiences of others. Through art, we can support diversity and give a voice to marginalized groups. So why will we all benefit from this? A cultural arts center will provide cultural awareness for everyone in our community, plus allow representation for people of color in our community. Not only this, but the majoritarian demographic would be exposed to minorities that they are surrounded by and become more acceptable and knowledgeable after learning more through a fun way, whether it be art, a movie, or a presentation from our center.
Social awareness needs to start at a young age. The Multicultural Arts Center will open children and adults' eyes to cultures that they normally would not hear about. This will happen through the involvement of community members who want to share special things from their cultures.
...out, enjoy the outdoors, etc.
So, for a statement of purpose, picture this: a safe space to get homeless citizens off the street, um, to get back on their feet into the big city, which would decrease rate of homelessness and help low income and/or eviction. Um, for our background info, there wasn't really a lot, um, but what we did find was, um, it was by an architect, Ross Chapin, which happened in 1995. Uh, he partnered with the cottage company founder, Jim Souls, to build the first contemporary pocket neighborhood in the city of Langley on Wood Bay Island in Pugget Sound. The idea of the pocket neighborhood is a modernized version of the bungalow court's first built in Pasadena, California in the early 20th century, which was developed from the 1909 through 1942. The bungalow court was viewed as a regional type of low-density multifamily housing that combined the individual privacy of a single residence with shared community space. This type of design provides a creative means for many neighborhoods to adapt tradition, traditions to more modern uses. Uh, for our stats, uh, currently in 2019, the poverty rate was over 14.94%. 14.16 were men and 15.68 were women. The race that is most likely to be in poverty, to be in poverty in Waukun County is people of color. Blacks with, were with a 32.92% below the poverty level. With this data, we hope to decrease these percentages levels that are so high.
And for design principles, I feel like, since this isn't, this is more of a new idea. For me, I'm more of a visual learner, so I made a little sketch, um, so you guys could have a more concrete idea of what we were going for. And so, this would be the center. This would be like the mess hall area that surrounds these boxes. Those are like the studio, like apartments are kind of like in clusters. And, and like near the back, you can see there's the shower hall, and then there's two laundry mats, depending on how big the area be. And of course, it's not drawn to scale or anything, but I took in, and my next slide, you'll talk more about zoning, so that's what these, um, measurements are. Um, and for zoning, um, from my research that I did, we, it seems like our idea is a R3A district, which is medium-density multifamily residence. And we are included in special uses in the general business code, which is dwelling in multifamily. Uh, we will also need to create an overlay for our district because there are special requirements in order for people to live in the pocket neighborhood. And bulk requirements would be followed for the front corner and rear yards, which will have at least 25 feet of space in between them, and the side yards will have at least 15 feet of space in between them. And our buildings will not exceed either six stories or 65 feet, and all general yard regulations will be followed from section 15.10 dash oh four of the general business district code. Um, where we will build, it's not on a fixed route for places like Connect Transit, since a lot of people wouldn't have cars. And when I talked to the people of Connect Transit, they were working on expanding using micro-transit. And micro-transit, it's more like on-demand, and it's not on a fixed route, so it would be very helpful, especially because from the zoning pictures where we would want to build, it's not in that zone. And I hadn't had time to reach out again, but another good possibility would be to add another bus stop to the area. And from the pictures that we got, I think that this spot is a prime example, is a great spot to put our pocket neighborhood, because as far as we know of, it's an available empty space. And it's also, it's near residential area and near business districts where they could get lots of job opportunities. And also in the area near is a Walmart, so they're next to a grocery store. And it's also even next to public lands, which is great for green space.
We'd like to give our acknowledgements to Mr. Dave Braun, um, Mr. Ryan Whitehouse, Mr. Greg Trummel, and Ms. Kimberly Cummings.
And these are our resources, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Trummel, I think you've got a succession plan here in this group. So, thank you for your presentations tonight. It's very, very, very obvious that you've done a lot of hard work, that you've identified community issues and problems that need to be addressed, and you've done it in a very creative way and a very caring way. So, it's, it's very, very impressive of what, what you've done. And from the pictures early on, it looks like you had fun doing it too, so that's important. Work, work needs to be fun. So, thank you for making this presentation tonight. Anyone else? Ms. Lorenz.
Okay, thank you. Um, all the presentations are very good. Um, in particular, I guess I'd like to know if there is, um, the, the middle, the middle presentation on the Normal Multicultural Arts Center. I have somebody that I think I'd like to introduce you to in the community, if you'd like to take that idea further and expand on it. A, a person I know gave a talk last fall about her experience as a US citizen, but a person of color, and, um, and, and a lot of the microaggressions that you're speaking about. And she's speak, she spoke of, you know, raising her children in this community, and, and it just was really very eye-opening to me. And so, I think I'd like for you to meet her and maybe, um, expand upon your idea. So, I'll work with Mrs. Freeman, because I know how to get ahold of her, and, uh, maybe she can, can, uh, forward that information to you, okay? Thank you.
I can just pause that. The thing that's so dynamic is you have three young women from three different high schools.
Nice. Yeah.
Mr. Nord.
Um, thank you for presenting. I'm always excited to see our youth getting involved in local politics, um, because at the end of the day, um, what we decide upon, you guys are going to end up paying for. So, think about all these ideas, because you will pay for it, your grandchildren, your, your, your children will be paying for it. We've already incurred a, a huge amount of debt that we will not be alive up here, and you guys will be paying for it. So, thank you for being involved, because you guys are our pocketbooks.
Speak, speak for yourself on that life, life expectancy, Mr. Nord. I planned on being around a little longer. Mr. McCarthy.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, thank you, everybody. Um, I think I mentioned this one. We spent a little time on the weekend with you. Um, but I want to say it out loud here, uh, tonight. It's, um, I don't remember what I was doing when I was your age, but it wasn't this. Uh, probably had something to do with sports and, and doing other things in the weekend that wasn't spending time in government buildings, talking about issues facing our community. And, uh, um, if the smiles on your face and the work and the fun, uh, that slide is any indication, I hope that means that you'll stay engaged in our community. And that as you continue to grow and become educated, um, that this is a place that you feel that you can have an impact on, and that that makes you want to stay. Uh, because we know if we can keep you guys engaged and it feels like something that you are helping to shape the future of, that you're more likely to stay here and, and help to continue all of the work that we're doing up here, uh, with your vision, with your ideas, with your thoughts. So, um, thank you for your energy and your effort at this point, and, uh, uh, love the ideas, love to hear how they move forward. I'm particularly interested in the Cultural Arts Center as well, to see how that, uh, idea fosters and develops and, uh, um, yeah, wonderful job, and thanks for your engagement.
Ms. Smith.
Not necessarily a comment, but I noticed one proud parent was trying to sneak in a picture, and I wonder if we could make time for any family members to get a, a shot of them.
Sure. Happy to do that. Yep. Mr. Preston, of course.
Yeah, I don't want to interrupt picture time. Maybe I'll speak quickly while, uh, they come up and get ready. I, uh, uh, thank you guys, each of you, for coming in for presenting tonight. It, uh, sometimes does not feel like that long ago, and other times, and I'll wait for the, uh, no pressure, but I'll wait for the, uh, take as many as you want. Yeah. It, um, sometimes it feels like not that long ago, other times it feels like an eternity, uh, that I was in, uh, Ms. Freeman's social studies class at West, and I have nothing, not nothing, but, but I have, uh, exponentially more, uh, just great memories from my time at West and in high school in general, uh, than I do, um, some of the difficulties that high school can bring. And, um, what you guys did tonight, uh, was important, not only for you individually and your peers, but it was important for us up here and the community. So, thank you for getting involved. Thank you for caring. Uh, as someone myself who got involved in my own way, uh, relatively, youngly, uh, at the time, um, I encourage you that whatever your passion is, and I hope it's this community, uh, in one way or another, I hope you continue following that, pursuing it, stay engaged, keep pushing, and, uh, decisions are made by those who show up. So, thanks for showing up tonight.
And I'll close out with a shout-out to Ms. Cummings, who at National League of Cities found this program and, um, got it moving and moving in the right direction, and did a lot of heavy lifting with Ms. Freeman and, I'm sorry.
Paige.
Paige. And all, all of you for doing this. It was incredible. So, thank you. We'll move on to the Omnibus Agenda, items considered routine, and will be handled with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Mr. Nord.
I'd like to pull Item B, C, and D.
Motion for approval, please.
So, moved.
Uh, Items on the Omnibus Agenda. Item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 18th, 2022. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. Nord.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mayor Kuss.
Aye.
That item is approved. Item B is a report to receive and file Town of Normal expenditures for payment as of April 27th, 2022. Mr. Nord.
So, move.
Second.
Mr. Nord.
Thank you. On page one of the expenses, um, under City Manager General expenses, expenses, there's an expense for Connect Transit for $238,000 and some change. And I understand part of this is for $200,000 that, this is not the $200,000 that we're going to be giving them. Then, could you explain what this is for?
Absolutely. Uh, this is, um, a couple, I'm not sure how many months, three months' worth of our typical payments to Connect Transit. Um, they had some staff transition issues and some things that, um, I guess perhaps fell through the cracks and realized recently that, um, a couple of months from our prior fiscal year did not get invoiced to us, so they invoiced us for three months at one time.
Okay, so this is nothing new.
No.
All right. Then, another question on page 17. Actually, this is more of a comment. On page 17, there's Cardo Inc. This is for creek clearing and creek burns. Um, I assume this is for Sugar Creek.
Um, it would be for our contract that we have with them, so it, part of it would be some burning that they did along, um, the creek from, between Blair and College, I think. Um, they've also been doing quite a bit of work in other areas. They did some work through Heather Ridge and Northfield subdivision as well.
Is that under this expense for that?
I do not know, but it's under the contract, and if, and I'd have to get back to you at a later date and, and look up the actual invoice.
Okay, because this is a section where, um, the town used to mow it, and we don't mow it anymore. We manually go in there and do this labor and, um, do these prescribed burns. This is $41,000. I believe the contract is $75,000. You know, if we look at Bloomington, what they're doing, and even Binward, they go in and mow for a lot less money than what, what we pay for doing this manually. So, I would like to see this, uh, looked at and try and find a more cost-efficient way to do this.
Mr. Nord, this is a result of a council action that was approved by the council for Cardo to do this work, so, uh, there won't be any such change unless we bring it forward, uh, rescind, not renew the contract with them, rescind the contract. Um, we signed a contract with this company to do this work, and they're going to do this work.
Um, Ms. Lorenz and I have sat and spoke with some town staff, and we were told that they were going to go in and mow at one point. And, you know, we did have this conversation, so I'd like to have this at the council at some point, so we can get to the details. Are we going to be doing this manually, or are we gonna, um, change this? Because I've not seen this contract come before the council.
Um, council did actually vote on the contract during your tenure on the council, Mr. Nord. Um, I can tell you, and I, and I know we've talked about this numerous times, um, the, the way the creeks will be maintained are through our best management practices, and that's been played, put together, and the policy and the practice has been adopted, and it's with input from Ecology Action Center and the like. I absolutely cannot speak for Bloomington, have no idea what they do. I can only tell you what our practices are, and we can talk about that in the future if council wants to reconsider, um, our best management practices and understand them further regarding stormwater management. Um, but this is all part of the understanding of how we are going to manage our creeks.
Okay, and the nexus of this is the residents in the area that complained about the excess mosquitoes, the snakes that come up out of the grass.
Yep. We've had those conversations, and I think that I, I've also, um, provided you information indicating, as I believe Ms. Lorenz, in recent conversations, that the residents have indicated their pleasure with how the creek, um, maintenance and the creek improvements have been occurring. So, I'm, I'm unaware of any continued complaints, but the good news is, we have continued studies going on. Illinois State University is partnering with us. They've got some cameras out. They've been publishing, um, the work they've been doing in terms of, um, animals and what kind of animals are using the creeks and what they're finding. So, it's part of a much bigger, um, picture, but I certainly understand your position. Um, we've had conversations. I am not prepared to say that we're going to change our practices, though.
Okay, we just must be talking to two separate groups of people, then.
Perhaps.
That's been known to happen. Mr. McCarthy. I'm sorry, Mr. Nord, do you have another question on?
No.
Bills? Mr. McCarthy. Oh, you had finger up.
Doing this.
Okay. Uh, please, please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
The item is approved. Item C is a resolution authorizing the renewal of the town's participation in the mutual, uh, municipal insurance cooperative agency known as MICA, that the insurance program for plan year 2022, 2023. Mr. Nord?
No move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
Um, was this bid out?
No, Mr. Nord. Um, we, we indicated in the council report that it's a quote from the cooperative agency of which we are a member.
Okay. And do we still have town staff that's, uh, an officer?
Uh, serves on the board, yes.
Okay.
Just like we did in, in the past years when we renewed our liability insurance program.
Sure. And was he a part of the decision making process?
Well, he serves on the board, Mr. Nord. I'm, a decision making process regarding what specifically?
Bringing this procurement to us?
Well, he wrote the council report. He's recommending that we renew.
Okay. Then there's a, there's a policy that the town has, the purchasing policy. It says that no employee may participate in the purchasing process if the employee knows any, any one of the following. And one of them is, um, if the employee or immediate family member holds a critical position with a bidder or vendor that is involved in the procurement transaction. And a critical position is an officer, a director, a trustee. So, um, if, if he was not on this board, would we be getting bids to choose from? Because there are other municipalities that, uh, don't use this vendor.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Day.
If I may, yeah, there seems to be a fundamental misunderstanding about what's before the council here tonight. Uh, the town is currently a member of the MICA, uh, joint purcha, it's a joint purchasing cooperative agency. It's an intergovernmental agreement where we've joined with a number of other local governments for joint purchasing of our insurance. Um, we've been a member of that. That is not the vendor before us. What's here is that joint purchasing cooperative that we are a member of goes out to the market and purchases insurance on behalf of the members of the agency. Now, the insurance itself was bid out. MICA bids out all of the insurance products that it receives that each of the, uh, members will therefore belong to. So, in this case, MICA is not the vendor. We're not talking about renewing a membership in MICA. What we're talking about is purchase or paying our dues, as it were, for the joint purchasing from our, uh, cooperative. And in terms of Mr. Hume being a director, that's how local government associations work, is that their board and all of their board officers are going to be members of the local governments that make up the cooperative.
Okay. So, there's some sort of financial arrangement where they are making the purchasing decision. And just with the plain language of this, we're asking to sign a contract with MICA, who he's a board member of. And I just see this as a conflict, therefore I cannot support it. And if you want to change the purchasing policy, remove this because we, whenever we have town staff that are directors bringing stuff before us with no bid contracts, to me, that just clearly violates the intent of councils before us that put the language in here that says officer, director, trustee.
We, we understand that, Mr. Nord, and, and I believe you made a similar point last year. I think we tried to clarify last year what, what is and is not a conflict and, and I don't believe you supported our renewal of our liability insurance program last year. So, the program is the same and I understand your position. But if there is not a conflict with the procurement policy, so you can...
No, then I'll just not vote for it, but that's why I'm not going to support it because to me, this is a clear conflict. We had another one before us where another, um, town staff was a director that we were going to be buying stuff from. We didn't find out till after the fact, you know? So, this is just the policy. All I'm doing is just trying to get the follow, the policy to be complied with or change the policy.
Mr. Nord, I would encourage you to, uh, later tonight, excuse me, uh, view Mr. Day's answer. You obviously didn't hear it, uh, so please review that answer. I think he explained it very, um, precisely.
Will a check be written to MICA?
Council has to vote first, Mr. Nord.
Ms. Smith?
Just for the, the record on this item, this is a cooperative that has a finite number of members that are participating in this insurance program. And by controlling the, the membership, there's a certain control over the risk undertaken by this cooperative in, in the sense that, that they're not including municipalities that might have higher catastrophes or premium experience that would cause the rates to go up because in fact, um, this rate that is quoted to us that we're looking at tonight, and of course I can't see it right now, um, that the rate increase is under 10% from the prior year, correct?
Correct. 2.5% for us alone. Yes.
So, um, this, this arrangement to, to be a member of a cooperative has helped the town control its cost. And, um, as a cooperative, just as you would have a, a co-op where tenants of the building are participating in self-rule, we have, uh, our finance individual participating in the self-rule for this cooperative to, to help see that our costs are staying, it within an appropriate parameter. And I'm quite pleased with how little the rate has gone up. Thank you.
Further on the item? Mr. Nord?
I'd just like to say that in my research, there's other towns that have compared. MICA was one of the companies that they were comparing with and not all of them went with MICA. You know, some did find lower cost alternatives, but at the end of the day, we don't know. And if a check's being written to MICA, there's a financial conflict.
Well, Mr. Nord, I'll elaborate on that because, uh, I serve on the Illinois Municipal League Board and, uh, Risk Management Association is probably the larger provider of this. What makes MICA stand out a little more differently is because, uh, MICA is a selective process. It's not something that you can just willy nilly join, but you have to be qualified by the rest of the board and that's done with the intention of keeping rates very affordable for the participating municipalities. And so, there may be many municipalities who looked at MICA but did not qualify under MICA standards and are doing other systems. Please call a roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The item is approved. Item D is an ordinance amending the liquor code concerning Class K, one day license hours of operation.
Mr. Nord?
No move.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Nord?
Um, it said that this was, this is being made because of a request. Who made the request to change this code?
I, I don't know a particular business. I, I don't have that information. I just know that it's a request that we received in the clerk's office, uh, regarding, I assume, a liquor license K holder.
So, we're making an entirely, so we're making a change to the municipal code and we don't know who made the change?
Um, personally, I don't. The, the question at hand is whether or not it makes sense to modify the hours and staff discussed it and we believe it does make sense on occasion because of the events. So...
Did you ask your staff if they know who?
I'm sure we know, Mr. Day. I, I would assume somebody knows. I, I personally don't know. The issue that was brought to me is here's a, here's a request we received to reconsider the Class K liquor license hours. We discussed the Class K liquor license hours rather than whether or not it makes sense for one particular business over another. The issue that we looked at was, does it make sense overall?
Yeah, so the most recent request, and we get this a lot because the, uh, the K license goes, I always called it the special K license. The K license goes with a particular event and not all of those events are automatically going to fall into those prescribed hours that are in our liquor code. Um, so we, this is a fairly frequent request we've had over the years at least since I've been here, um, vendors looking to, you know, go an hour outside either direction or something. I believe the latest one was the Country Music Festival that's supposed to... Mr. Day, I'm going to ask you to get on your microphone a little bit. You're going to have to make these desks shorter or, or microphones longer. I believe the latest, uh, requester was the Country Music Festival. Forget the name of it that's coming in.
The upcoming event in June at McLean County Farm Bureau, perhaps?
Correct.
Tailgates and tall boys, I think.
I think that's it.
But there are all sorts of special events that use this license.
Right. Yeah, this, I mean, that's the most recent, but yeah, this is a common request that we get frequently.
So, is the issue that, I mean, because right now they can sell from 11:00 AM to one, or 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM. Is the issue that they want to sell liquor before 11:00 or later in the night?
Could be both.
Both or either, depending on the event.
Okay, so then what we're proposing is that there, they could do it whenever the mayor allows. I mean, they could go later than 1:00 AM, which is, I mean, late, late or earlier than when like liquor could be sold, even at like a grocery store?
I'm not sure when liquor can be sold at a grocery store, honestly.
I think 7:00 AM is when liquor can be sold in a grocery store.
Okay. Why wouldn't we just change these times instead of leave it up to one person to decide, um, per event?
Supposed? Go ahead.
Well, yeah, I mean, the thinking was because each of these types of events tend to be, uh, different and the moment we put down whatever the new hours are, somebody's going to come in with a different, some kind of lock-in event or something overnight where they want to have an open bar or something and it's going to fall outside and probably the very first time, first request we'll get after setting the hours would be for some different hours. Um, in this case, it gives the discretion to look at the event and decide what's reasonable in light of what that event is.
And that could be outside of what our bars could be able to sell liquor.
That's why it's a special liquor license. It's a Class K license specifically for special events.
Sure. I would rather, if there's something special, it come back to the council. You know, I'm okay with like adjusting the hours a little bit, but giving control to just one person, because this would be the liquor commissioner alone making that decision. That then sets it up for, um, playing, playing favorites. You know, it might not be Mayor Kuss, it might be the next mayor that comes in, that in order to get longer hours, there may be some expectation. And I think this sets up the ability for abuse. And again, maybe not you, but in the future, because this is, this is a change to the code.
No, I completely understand that, Mr. Nord. And if that, uh, if that is abused, then the council has the option to fix that. Uh, Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, uh, memory serves from the packet, we're talking about a one day license, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this isn't something that could be ongoing. It's for a limited engagement only, trying to use entertainment?
Event.
Yeah, an event. Okay. So, um, if, if we are indeed getting multiple, it seems like that there's, uh, a uniqueness and a diversity of, of needs of the events. So, um, you know, I certainly appreciate, uh, not trying to just open it up from, for 24 hours to try to meet the needs of every single event. I, I wouldn't be supportive of that, uh, type of an approach. So, I don't know that we can, I don't know all the different requests. Um, I know I've, uh, we've had a conversation about this in the past about the, the K license and the hour limitation. Um, so, uh, refresh my memory, the liquor commissioner, um, makes other decisions. Is that not accurate? I know I'm putting you on the spot, Mr. Day.
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay. So, this isn't the unique situation, uh, that we're, uh, considering here tonight. The liquor commissioner has the authority by the council's hand. Uh, I seem to recall one of those. I don't remember the particulars. Um, but the, the, we did cede the, uh, power, I believe, for fines, uh, to, uh, the liquor commissioner, I believe, uh, once upon a time, uh, years passed. So, uh, certainly if we have the ability to vote that tonight, we have the ability, if we believe it's being abused in any way, to, to change that or any council in the future has the ability to do that. I don't have an abuse concern at all, uh, rather than I'd have a looseness of rules , uh, concern of trying to turn a one day event into a 24-hour liquor license, uh, to meet the needs of everybody in one set policy. So, that would be my concern. I was trying to just expand the hours so much that it's just, hey, serve whenever you want for 24 hours. And I don't know that, that's really what we want to go with.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks. So, just building on the original question that was posed and then I think some of what, uh, Mr. McCarthy later added. So, with this proposed change tonight, how would the term one day even be defined? I mean, would it, i- is there, for instance, is there an opportunity where an event could propose a, uh, K license that would begin at 8:00 AM on one day where they could sell liquor until 7:59 AM the following, almost 24 hours later? And then it would be subject to the liquor commissioner to say yes or no at that point, but it would still fall within 24 hours where liquor could be sold? Or how is this, I mean, explain to me how we're, how is one day defined?
Yeah, it would be a 24-hour period.
Okay. So, that could, in theory, happen if we remove the, uh, if we remove the requirements?
To reinforce Mr. Nord's point, that would not happen. Further on the item? Mr. Nord?
I would, I would like to hear from the folks that have had an issue with the current, um, license times that we, that we currently have. I'd like to hear from, I've never heard anybody complain about this. So, um, respectfully, I'd like to make a motion to table this so council can hear from folks that have the issue.
We have a motion to table. Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Further on the item? Please call a roll.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
No.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The item is approved. Uh, we move to general orders, uh, one item, a resolution amending the employment agreement of the municipal manager.
Motion for approval?
With approval?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this item. Mr. Nord?
Um, we've got a lot of bills that people are now faced with that they weren't expecting. You know, inflation is skyrocketing, the cost of fuel, you know, power is going to be skyrocketing as well. And, you know, we need to be respectful of their budgets. Um, we've increased the taxes that we're charging them and our budget just here at the council is, you know, much, much higher than what it was before. I believe it's 39% higher. And, um, I just don't feel that it's, uh, shows that we're being fiscally responsible to, uh, keep giving increases for a population of only 50,000 people and a big bulk of those folks are college students. So, um, if Ms. Reese needs more money, you know, at some point she's going to have to go to a bigger pond because our community can only afford so much money. You know, our roads are not in great shape. You know, if they were, then maybe I'd be thinking a little bit differently, but that's where I'm at. Our priorities seem like they are inverted. Streets, water, sewer, public safety is where I've always been. And even with the, uh, um, Streets, water, sewer, public safety is where I've always been. And even with the, uh, um, list of the, uh, city manager, uh, priorities for this upcoming year, streets, water, sewer, public safety, they're not on here. You know, and that's what we need to focus on is the streets. I think that's the number one complaint that we have from our residents. Um, so my priorities are not in alignment with Ms. Reese. Therefore, you know, I've got to represent the wishes of my, or of our constituents and I just can't support this raise.
Ms. Smith?
I, I'd like to push back a little bit on some of the information Mr. Nord shared that when he was discussing the budget increase. Um, you, that doesn't reflect the fact that a large amount of the budget increase is coming from ARPA funding that are federal dollars that we have a limited time to, to spend. And in terms of priorities, the budget is our pri- encapsulates the town's priorities. And we have in fact had more capital projects and more roadwork done as a result of having those capital dollars presented to the town, uh, through those ARPA funding. And, and so I, I would argue that, that that does capture the priorities of our city manager. And, um, as, as a female who has spent much of my life in a male-dominated field, I fail to see how need is the criteria for discovering and quantifying and qualifying someone's pay. Because I would hazard a guess that most men would argue that they deserve a raise because of, of their performance. They don't have to go home and, and say, well, here's my expenses and as long as you give me enough to cover this, I'm good. So I think there's a, a, a different criteria that's being employed here in, um, evaluating whether or not our city manager has in fact earned this increase. And I would point out, as I have on multiple occasions, that the town of Normal with its 52,000 residents and students are residents, whether they're students or any other citizen here, they still take city services. Our budget at roughly 52,000 is a dollar figure that Bloomington with roughly 25% more citizens should only have 50% more in their budget. And yet, year after year, it tends to be 100% more. And so to argue that she is not deserving of this salary and that we are not being efficient, I think is, is, is an inaccurate portrayal of what we're doing. Our, our garbage is picked up every week. Our bulk waste is picked up every week. Our leaves are picked up before the season ends. Our roads were plowed within 24 hours of the snow and those are services that citizens care about and they are delivered because our town is well managed. Thank you.
Further on the item? Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, I just wanna, uh, seize a little bit on something. Um, Ms. Smith said that the, the 39% figure we, when that was thrown out during the, the budget, uh, there was, um, that included ARPA dollars that are in our budget, our one-time spend. Uh, if you take these one-time federal government dollars out, it was less than a 10%. Uh, don't quote many friends in the media. I think it was less than 10%, uh, but somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, so just, so that information, uh, gets out there. So, so when I'm looking at this, I, you know, um, I, I have a fundamentally different perspective on this, I guess. So when, when you're looking at reviewing somebody, we're, we're, we should be looking at their performance. Um, our ability to attract and retain high-quality talent because we want a high-quality community. Um, and, uh, are we roughly in line with what's going on in the marketplace? And so when you look at those three things overwhelmingly, the answer is yes. Uh, the performance is very good. Um, you know, a very impressive list of accomplishments in and of themselves. But when you put them in, juxtapose them over the top of a pandemic, uh, they're, you know, quite spectacular. Uh, and so to my mind, she's certainly performed admirably. Um, our ability to retain quality talent, um, we all know what's going on in the marketplace. We've got a labor shortage, government is no, uh, uh, different than private industry. And our ability to, to maintain high-quality leadership is partly based on our ability to, to recognize their accomplishments. Um, you know, thanks very much, but if you want something better, go to someplace else is not the way we instill that type of culture here. Anywhere is telling somebody to go someplace else to, if you need a pay raise, is not how you instill a culture of we value people. And so I'm just diametrically opposed to that kind of a thinking when we're talking about retaining quality people in an organization and a culture of, of retaining quality employees. Um, also, if you look around, it's very in line with what our uh, neighborhood, uh, city to the south, uh, compensates them. If you look around, uh, relatively, uh, what we tend to use our comparable, uh, communities, it's relatively in line given population and responsibility sets. Um, and so for me, uh, uh, the raise is in line. Uh, Ms. Reese has, has done a very good job, uh, in my estimation, um, in some very challenging situations. Uh, and, uh, um, uh, I'm fully supportive of this, uh, without hesitation.
Ms. Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so for me, taking a look at a couple of different things, um, number one, you know, when there's been conversations and we talk about performance and we look at all that this organization has done and accomplished, um, I always believe that it starts with leadership. Attitude reflects leadership. And when I look at the staff, and I've been very engaged with the staff at all levels for many different reasons. And that tells me a lot about the leadership. And a lot of you have done a lot of things and go above and beyond. And you do that because of the leadership. And today we, we're having a conversation about the leadership. Um, and so beyond just the fact of the amount of money we've been able to bring in because the organization as a whole has worked together to identify needs and put wonderful packages together for us to get, um, get funding at both state and federal level for the co-op, collaboration and cooperation that we've done with our partners and other cities and communities. How we've been able to maintain with less than, um, what would be required of staffing or what the needs of staffing. I take a look at all of that. And when I see that all of you stay committed, even in a very toxic environment at times, that speaks highly to the level of leadership that you're still willing to be committed to. And I, to me, that says a lot. And for us as a council, when we went seeking for a new city manager, what we asked for was somebody who could continue that, that same level that you could be, um, assured of as employees, that that culture would not change, that you, that same passion that you had, where we see people here, years of service, 25, 35, and actually will say, you know, I'm kinda sad that I'm leaving, but it's just probably time for me to find something else. And we asked for that type of leadership. And we've received it. And I think it's well rewarded even during hard times, not just from a pandemic, but from the environment in which that leader has had to work and endure through. So to me, I highly support tonight giving that raise.
I'll make two comments here tonight. Um, the first one is there are people in this world that think, uh, government is exempt from inflation. Inflation doesn't touch government. It touches everywhere else and, but it never touches government. So government should have the same amount of money day in and day out to do things and not affected by the market, by the economy of the country or things like that. You know, in, in my business, I've seen costs go up significantly on product. I'm having to pay people more employees. Um, these are the li- the times we live in and we have to make do with that and we have to figure out how to make it work. And I've been doing that for about 40 years now. So this notion that government can hold costs and prices on everything across the board because your government does not hold up in the real world. It does not. Secondly, uh, we vote on this once a year and I can tell you, this is the easiest vote I make all year. Because Ms. Reese is one of the most professional, hardworking, agile, intelligent people that I have worked with in my career. She's incredibly dedicated to the professionalism of her job and she does it day in and day out. And so I have, again, this is an easy vote for me. Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kus?
Aye. The resolution is approved. We have two item, one item of new business, cause we moved one. Uh, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Fire Associates Architecture and Urban Design, uh, for master planning services pertaining to Uptown South.
With approval?
Thank you. Second, discussion on this item.
Mayor, if I could do an introduction before council starts, uh, conversation. Um, this particular agenda item, um, we have, um, Ms. Davison. I'm gonna invite Ms. Davison forward to, to respond to council questions, if council has any. Um, we have been talking about continued economic development opportunities for quite some time. At council's last meeting, we took a big step in, um, council adopting a memorandum of understanding for Trail East and Trail West sites so we can continue, um, development in the, the traditional uptown area. We've also been talking throughout the budget process and, um, throughout our planning um, and discussions about what this current fiscal year looks like. And we've talked about the need to move forward with a master planning process on the south side of the railroad tracks. It's about eight acres. Um, and so what, what we did a couple of months ago, we issued a request for qualifications. And we received three responses and, um, a multidisciplinary team of town staff interviewed all three of those respondents. And following that process and further conversations, we have come to the conclusion that we believe the best team to move forward with the master planning process for the south side of the tracks um, would be Fire and Associates. They bring a strong team with them for this process. Council knows that we have a, a, um, quite a bit of experience with Doug Fire and Fire and Associates and the various teams he's brought to the table for the past planning processes. Our very first, at the time, we called it Downtown Renewal Plan. It has been since converted to Uptown Renewal Plan. Was adopted around 2000-ish. And, um, then we went through a master planning update in 2015. So we'll be happy to talk to council about what this next planning process can look like. Um, but we're asking for council's support to move forward and execute an agreement with Fire and Associates so we can uh, get going on this exciting process to lay out what the south side of the tracks can look like in the future. And again, Ms. Davison is, is present to answer any questions council may have.
Questions or comments? Ms. Smith?
Hi, thank you. Um, so the other plan was done about seven years ago. Um, what is the advantage of undertaking this revision now? What is, is compelling a second look seven years after the, the previous revision?
Sure. So in 2014, 15, when we did the Uptown 2.0 plan, as we called it, um, the Uptown South area was only a component of it. Um, it certainly was looked at and there were some really good, um, there's a lot of discussion around it. There's, you can look at that plan and see there were some conceptual layouts for the area. But at that time, we had, we did not know whether there would be an underpass or not. We certainly didn't know a footprint or functionality of it. Um, and the conditions at the time, just in, in general in the market were quite different. Um, so we certainly gathered a lot of valuable input and some of that will remain valuable. But as you know, and I indicated in the report, that there have been a lot of key changes in the world since then. Um, you know, some of them revolve around the increased demand for housing, a lot of which is based on Rivian expanding incredibly. Um, also, market conditions for the kinds of housing people want is changing. Um, the, the amount of retail space and/or office space that one might expect in a central business district is different in 2022 than it was in 2015. Um, so some of the specific things we even talked about in 2015, like grocery or, you know, small-scale retail. Seven years is like 100 years for some of that. Um, people have really changed their shopping habits, their working habits, et cetera. So there are things about the 2015 plan um, that really need a hard look. And, and this would be again focused on Uptown South. The, the exercise in 2015 was, was much broader than that. Um, this would be the deep dive.
So if my understanding is correct, around 2014, 2015 was shortly around the time that State Farm announced that it was moving hubs, consolidating, moving hubs to three southern cities. And it, it shocked the real estate market here locally. And now, as we're looking at this, we've got a company that, to update the slides that the, uh, Youth on a Mission presented, exceeds 5,000 employees. And the recent Bloomington Normal Economic Development Report, the preliminary reports on housing shows that rentals are, um, above 95% occupancy. I think it may even be above 97% occupancy. So the, the housing demand wasn't there when it was done before, but now you have a known quantity in the footprint of the underpass of the eight acres in this parcel. How much is the underpass going to consume?
Ooh, that's a good question. And I, I'm going to say it's somewhere around an acre. Um,
But if I could jump in, it's not necessarily the underpass specifically. It would be the amphitheater in, in the public space, you know, coming from the underpass project. So I just wanna make that clear. That would still be public space. But yeah, about an acre-ish.
So, so and the pandemic has caused a shift in a view towards, uh, office space. I just saw an article today about Bend, Oregon, um, as one of the communities where individuals and families are looking to locate in smaller communities because working remotely gives them the option to do that. And so smaller communities are benefiting from the influx of individuals that are attracted to that lifestyle as opposed to living in the city. And, and this study would give us the opportunity to factor in those changes in, in public taste and demographics?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Before, before I take any other comment, uh, on this thing, I do wanna caution people that the, uh, process we're doing tonight is selecting someone to do this plan. Uh, and so, you know, I feel the same way sometimes. What are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? That's not what we're here to talk about tonight. There's gonna be ample opportunity to do that. So it's the idea, do we go forward with the recommendation from staff? And so I'd like to keep the conversation more focused on that. But, Ms. Lorenz?
If, if I may, just one more. Um, but the process that would be involved here would involve public input?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lorenz?
Okay, um, I wanna maybe, um, use this first time that I'm gonna speak and not ask Ms. Davison any questions. I'll put you off the hot seat for a moment. Um, and instead, maybe redirect this conversation, um, in a way that maybe gets at the, um, why we're doing this or why, why we're even entertaining doing this. Okay? Doing this analysis of how to use the land use of this, these eight acres. Um, and I'm gonna start with a quote from a resident who called me today and maybe called some of you too, and, um, imposed this question to me. Now, I think I know the answer, but I think I'm gonna offer this up as a way to maybe do our own gut check.
to maybe do our own gut check on why we're doing this, okay? So here's the quote from one of our residents. "Is this something we need to do in order to sustain life? Joe Public can't afford this spending." That was a direct quote. I went on to try to answer that riddle of wants versus needs because I do believe it's in the eye of the beholder. But, but it was a very frank question. And the way that I would begin to answer it, and I don't want to influence you, but I would encourage others who might come after me to offer up their perspective. The way I tried to answer this for this particular resident and any other residents who might feel the same way that she does is this area, this eight acres, represents economic development, an infill or redevelopment of a business district. And one could argue that economic development is in fact the lifeblood of a community. It impacts everything from property tax, property values, which impact ensuing levies. It impacts potential for, for sales tax revenues. It impacts maybe more qualitative issues as far as place making. Lots of information and literature is out there on the value, the economic value of place making. Not to undervalue quality of life aspects of place making. So that was how I tried to begin to answer it. But I don't know that my answer is complete. But I guess I want to redirect this conversation and those who might come after me if they would in their comments, include a gut check on themselves as to why are we doing this? Thank you.
Further, Mr. Preston?
Thanks. So I spent a pretty thorough amount of time going back through our previous council items in years past about this entire Uptown 2.0. And there were a number of actions that I kind of wanted to follow along with and refresh myself on. And the overarching theme that I walk away with personally with this is that the $80,000 that's being requested in this action tonight is really, more than anything, a result of, well, it's been six years since we approved Uptown 2.0. Certainly, the world and markets have changed. The way consumers interact and spend and live and shop, whatever, has changed. But the fact that the market has changed and the world has changed is kind of, for me, what the driving motivation behind this action tonight seems to be. The work itself, the pulling in stakeholders, the doing the market analyses, the transportation, all that stuff, seems to strike a very similar tone to money that we've already spent in years past for Uptown 2.0. And even since the idea of looking at what is now the underpass, even since that time came up, and specifically on the south side of the tracks. So, you know, for me, it, is it worth the fact that, is it worth $80,000 to do the same work that we did six years ago, but just do it now again because it's six years later?
Well, I think some other council members may elaborate on that. But I will most emphatically say it is not the same work. And I will address it if someone else does not. Mr. McCarthy and then Mr. Nord.
Thank you, Mayor. I, it sounds like we are all kind of doing similar things, looking backwards and how did we get here? And what are we focusing on? Strictly on the agenda item, I'm supportive in moving forward with the planning process. I think we're here in part as a result of a process just like this happening 20-plus years ago. We're able to consider greater economic development opportunity because a plan was created and we followed the plan. I understand where my colleague is coming from. But in light of, you know, a recent proposal for the potential for 150 new housing units in Uptown, changes dramatically what's potentially going to be needed, whether we're talking in parking, we're talking retail, et cetera. So I think there's a lot of new factors for us to consider. Although the key components, I, I hope are part of this, this plan, that we consider parking, that we consider housing types. I know there's a housing study that if it's not, the bow's not on it yet. It's very close, I think, to be released to help us in this planning process. And we didn't have that the last time as well. And so I think there are a number of new factors. But, but I hope we do go through a lot of the same processes because it's been a successful methodology for us here in Uptown. For me, it's certainly an economic development opportunity. And to meet other needs, we have housing needs in our community that have certainly evolved since the pandemic, just in the last couple of years. But some of them have been in the works for a long time. I think, you know, some of the things that have certainly been considered, anchor projects, housing types, community meeting places, are all signs of a growing and prospering community. And certainly, you know, the conversation about Rivian and the economic activity that they're generating, and the need for housing. But we also have Ferrero, and we have other projects in the community as well. So for me, it's at minimum an economic development project. But it's also a continuation of, of a vision of a thriving central business district. And when we look back to, I was a graduate student here when Uptown, do we call it 1.0? What do we call that? Uptown Development, the initial plan. And, you know, the amount of jobs, the amount of vibrancy, the amount of energy, the amount of commerce, the amount of food, the quality of life that's come about as a result is sort of amazing from that time in 1995, 96, when I arrived back into the community to see what it is today. I also just want to remind council that, you know, we had a conversation, a cursory conversation, a very preliminary conversation about this in several meetings ago, several months ago, when we were talking about the underpass and funding and moving forward on that. And we all talked in support of doing a master plan and that we added some urgency. I believe we gave Ms. Reese some directive to move the urgency of creating a master plan forward. Because if we're going to do the underpass and get it done, then we want to make sure that those economic opportunities are not lost by not having a plan. And here we are at the behest of council in that discussion to accelerate the planning process. So I, I'm still of that same mind from that conversation over many months ago. Those comments were made here at the council. And I'm very excited about this. It's been a long time coming. The underpass conversation was a long time coming, almost 10 years. But to see the opportunity for new housing types, new commerce, new jobs, to heighten and improve, not to mention, you know, we're still talking about a TIF district here, folks. And so we're talking about land that's low tax value and municipally owned, getting off the municipal tax, low tax generation, and getting it to private hands to generate more significant tax dollars for our schools. And so developing on the south side will certainly help provide more school funding and funding for other projects. So there's a whole host of things that I'm supportive of. I know only some, some of those will probably speak to my colleague's question. But I'm going to stop and give other people an opportunity to speak.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. I think it's premature for us to be spending money on a study on the south side of the tracks. I think we also need to kind of have a common definition as to what economic development is. In my mind, economic development, one of our goals is to try and bring in businesses that bring in money from out of the area. You know, that's the economic backbone. And from that, you will then bring folks that need, or businesses that need employees. They will then bring in people that are looking for homes. They'll bring in people, businesses that have restaurants, grocery stores and whatnot, because we've got a population of people here that are earning money from out of the area. That's what drives an economy. It seems like, you know, this conversation of economic developments around us building housing, you know, that's the job of, like, developers. Government, we should not be competing with that. And it seems like we're getting into a rut of doing that. Uptown, it hasn't proven success yet. You know, it's not completely built out. We don't have vacancy here. You know, we don't have businesses clamoring to come in here like we were promised. We've got government that's taking over space, but that's taxpayer dollars. That's not economic engine money coming in. You know, so far, we haven't had the ability to attract these businesses. We can't, we haven't finished out the build-outs, the parking garage. The first floor is still not even built out, you know, one Uptown. We can't rent out space in this building for people that can afford it. You know, subway can't even afford to stay without subsidy. The art center, you know, we can't get a business in there, one Uptown. The second floor in one Uptown, you know, the list goes on. Mary Ann's Diner, that's still vacant. You know, you can walk up and down the street. Up until we start seeing businesses come in, then I think it's premature to be doing it. You know, at some point in the future, yes. But we can't force development. We can't force progress. And also, just last year, I mean, something that I don't, I can't wrap my head around is, in this eight acres, last year, we were asked if we wanted to sell part of the building that the town owns there, the one on Irving and Linden Street. But now, it's in this drawing as this is part of the Uptown 2.0. So that's where my mind's at. I think it's premature. You know, this is going to be more than the $80,000 because we've got staff time involved in this as well. And, you know, that's going to be pulled away from other things. They're going to take them away from other things. So I would rather see this delayed until we get these other buildings moving along. We see who actually comes in. Otherwise, we're going to be building more and more vacancy. And it may be then, another eight years down the road, we're going to have this, this study redone again. You know, so wait and see what the market does here on the north side of the tracks. And then let's see what the south is, you know? And once, and once the underpass is done, you may have developers come in with an idea that we can't think of. And that would be fantastic as well. So I just think it's premature. I'd rather see the money go elsewhere right now.
Ms. Smith?
It's my understanding that if we engage in this study now and solicit public input and discussion about possibilities for this eight acres, that should a developer come in, we would have a better basis for taking a vote on whether or not we think that developer's idea is worthwhile. I, I think it's more proactive to make plans while you have the time to consider options carefully and thoughtfully and solicit input rather than to be put on the spot when a developer comes in with an idea and feel the pressure of, okay, if we say no to this, are we, are we closing the door on everything? And I just recently learned the secret to knowing what's in Bloomington and what's in Normal with the color of the fire hydrants, yellow being the Bloomington fire hydrants and red being Normal. And, and I was, as, one of the reasons their costs are higher is because they are so spread out. They've, the town, the city has had to expand utility lines and sewage in, into dispersed public areas. Normal has the luxury of being more condensed. And if we've got this concentration, I think we need to be smart about where we allow things to be built and what does get built. And, and I would rather spend the money to get ideas from the public, from individuals interested in the area before someone comes to us and we feel the pressure that we've got to make a decision without really understanding what the, the price of that yes or no would be.
Ms. Lorenz, I'm going to jump in and try to answer some of your questions here. Because I thought it was a valid question. You know, the function of local government, one of the primary functions of local government is land use. We do this all the time. We tell people, you can build single-family here. You can build multifamily here. And we do that with the advice of our, our staff and that to make our community function as well as we can. That's a primary, primary function of government for us to make these plans. And sometimes they're small plans, sometimes they're bigger plans. Another reason we should do this is because we own the land. It's, it's town's land. So I think it's the town's responsibility to come up with some direction on how that land would use. We own about 90% of the land that's in that area. And, you know, the notion that we're spending $80,000. If you were a private developer and had eight acres of land, I guarantee you, you were spending more than $80,000 doing the pre-planning on how you're going to use that land and what you're going to do with that. I guarantee you, they're going to do that. It may be in staff time, whatever. But that, it's not to say that the private side doesn't have to do that work when the public side does. So I talked about my business once before, and I'll do it again. When I get a new employee in my business, I tell them, look around this store. I want you to look around all these products, all these bikes, all these nice shoes and that. And I say, we don't sell one thing that people need, not one. We sell things that people want. That's, that's the nature of our business. And what people want in the municipal side is they want parks. They want swimming pools. They want trails. They want festivals. They want a quality of life in their community that the government can help provide for that. And, and that's our job, too, to provide that quality of life, that, that sense of place that people want to be in. And so I don't see it as much as a need because we don't need to do anything, really. I can't remember, and I won't even bring it up to ask you. I think if you look at the code for municipal governments, we have one charge, and that's to keep records. Anything else we do is, is optional. So if we're going to get down to our, our basic function, that's what, that's our basic function by law. So everything else we do, we do for our citizens. So that's why I think this is the right thing to do. It's, it's an opportunity to leverage on, on what's successful. We'll argue back and forth whether it was successful or not successful. We've approved an underpass with the notion that we were going to do something on the other side to tie the two areas together. That was the initial intent of the underpass, is tying two areas together. So, you know, this is, to me, is, is the logical and proper process to move forward. Mr. Nord?
So, Mr. Mayor, you were talking about how you say that people want, like, the events to go to, you know, this condensed Uptown vibe. What I hear from folks is they want affordable taxes. They want an affordable place to live. You know, we do have a lot of parks. We've got a lot of things going on. So... So, again, we must be talking to different groups. The TIF for Uptown, that's gonna be expiring soon, you know, and the fear that I have is, once we go down this route, we're putting this ball on the field and it's gonna keep moving forward. When that TIF expires, one and a half million dollars that we're getting to help support all of our debt for Uptown, now goes to the school district. We have to come up with that. You know, so until we, until, you know, I think, we as, well, if we're gonna call ourselves fiscally responsible, folks, we need to see how that funding is gonna happen before we start investing in an area where we may end up doubling our debt, you know, from what I've been told is, we're looking at putting a library down there, you know, we're talking government things, we're not talking business. You know, and if it's business, it's something like what we have in Uptown, you know, where the first floor is business and then apartments on top, but even the developer we had here last time we met, he's not even using rents for the first retail, or for the first floor of that retail space in his profitability calculations, which for me, that tells him that he's not anticipating that being able to be rented out if he's not putting that in his profitability calculations, because that's what he's gonna come back to us to fill that gap. So, you know, I wanna see this be successful before we create a plan that might be outdated and consumer preferences change, and then we're just gonna redo this. We already have a plan, developers can look at what we've got currently, and they can put their own spin on it.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you. I agree, I think economic development is a, you know, is a nebulous thing, so I agree with that comment and definition. I was at the EDC this morning for a, a meeting, and to the, the, it'll be interesting to see when they launch their new branding with some of the affordability metrics and how affordable our community is compared to the national average and to compare to, to our peer communities. That housing is dramatically more affordable here than, than the national average and some other metrics that I, I can't quote, because I saw them very quickly this morning at the EDC. They also asked me a question, just kind of off the cuff on the way out, one of the staff members said, hey, do you know, are you aware of available space in Uptown? I've got a business that wants to locate here and wants to be in Uptown, but they can't find a space. Mary Ann's until recently wasn't available, because the former tenants were still paying lease payments, and the landlord wasn't interested in doing anything with the space until very recently. And so, that wasn't available. There's one other spot that's available, and the, and the owner isn't interested in selling that property. And so, this business that wants to locate here and wants to be in our Uptown actually cannot find a space, and the EDC was asking, hey, do you have any insight of anything coming available? So, I, I agree, I, I think we ought to be listening to economic development professionals and their definitions and what they're hearing from the need of our community, and what they're telling us is that housing is economic development. If you have a, an employer that's bringing 5,000 new jobs to a community, but they can't find places for their employees to live, housing is economic development, and that, that's a challenge that we have for Arrow's investing as well, and they're bringing new jobs and, and new people, where are those folks gonna live? So, and to be level set, we, we didn't design or build housing as a government, we're trying to incent developers to come here, and so, we're not competing with developers, we're trying to get developers to come and build housing types, and we're trying to help them out by doing housing studies to say, what are we short, what does our community need, and what are the types of housing stock that makes the most sense and will most likely be successful on our community? And so, to me, and, and talking with the folks at our, our local EDC, that's one of the biggest economic development needs right now is housing, so I, I think it's a very relevant conversation for the South. Whether that turns out to be or not, I know we've had one private development corporation that was interested already in Uptown South, and they are waiting for the underpass, and they expressed that to us in a written letter when we were talking about the, the Uptown Underpass project. So, I, I know that's on private developers' minds, and, and I hope we're successful, but I think a good, healthy debate about what economic development is and, and what the prior era is, is important, but I think we ought to be consulting with the economic development professionals in our community when we have those conversations for this type of thing and certainly going forward. But I agree with the "planned ahead" comments from my colleagues already, so I'm very supportive, Mayor.
Are we ready for a vote? Ms. Lorenz, go right ahead.
Thank you. I promised to put Ms. Davidson back in the hot seat with some questions. So, let's see. The process by which we got here was a RFQ, correct? Okay. And that brought about three responses or proposals, okay?
Correct.
It is not customary or even allowed for us to see the other proposals prior to voting on them.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, certainly, oops. Certainly not customary, and the proposals aren't public until after council awards a contract.
Okay.
But we historically don't include other proposals for technical services and the like in council packets, so you can see all the details from the various proposers.
Okay. So, while in, let's see, so what I was, what I, well, I want to respect that process and that custom of only sharing the one that's been selected. I do have some questions that I try to, I'd like to try to ask and answer them to the best that you can. How did this one cost compare to the others? Higher, lower, or the same?
That's actually easy to answer, because when you do a request for qualifications, you really are looking at the qualifications of those proposing, so you're looking at their ability to perform the task you have laid out before them. So, you are definitely not asking them to propose a price. So, none of the three came to the table with, here's a dollar amount. So, they were not evaluated based on that.
Okay. So, then that brings me to my next question. What was, in general, the rubric that you used to evaluate the qualifications?
Sure. We looked at the expertise that the team brought to the table, so from prime contract holder and then any sub consultants, so we looked at their experience, other projects they'd done, and how comparable would, would they be to a normal Illinois-type of project. We looked at their, their staffing ability, so making sure that they had the capacity, the bandwidth on their end to make sure they could handle the project. We looked at their proposals for important components, like, what do you think is an important public process that we need to go through? So, so people, you know, all the firms proposed, and these are the ways we engage with the public, so we looked at that really hard. So, those were, you know, some of the factors we used.
Okay. And did, how would you rate the, the one you selected? What was its strongest qualification that was like the, the game changer, that tipped it over the edge?
Well, I mean, there were a couple of things, and, and to be fair, you know, all three have, you know, offered different things, and they all are very capable firms. The FAR proposal, you know, one thing that FAR's group has that is unique to them is that they have been directly involved in, you know, significant planning projects in Uptown, so that's certainly something to weigh in on, but, but not enough. It wasn't enough for a firm to just come forward and say, well, we've been here before, we know your community. That was a factor. They brought a very diverse team to the table by way of the types of people and the types of firms. The, the expertise that all of those firms have are really excellent, we've had very good experience with, with all of the players on the team, so that was also really important.
Okay. So, my last question then is, is about the price, and this kind of brings me back to my resident and the quote that I, that I read. People are concerned about the, the economy and inflation and prices and, and their bills, and, and so, it's, it's understandable when somebody says, oh my gosh, you're spending $80,000, that's a lot of money, and, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, pay my electric bill. And so, you know, that's why, why we're here, and that's, that's what we have to weigh in on, and, and weigh the pros and cons, and, and try to, to find some, some sense in all of it, I guess. And so, my question is, do you think that there's any way that we could ever, like, once we, once we would get into it with this particular vendor, you know, that we would have some flexibility to maybe reduce the price some? You know, for instance, where my head is going on this, the housing study, we have a housing study that's about ready to be finished by the EDC, maybe they wouldn't have to spend as much time on that aspect of the deliverable. We have a parking study that's coming forward from another vendor, same thing. So, are there going to be maybe some possibilities whereby we could contain the cost of $80,000, so, you know, up to but not to exceed sort of opportunity?
Well, the, the proposal before you is a contract for the $80,000, and they broke it out between all their sub consultants, that is what, that is what they are aware of that has been brought forward tonight. So, if there were any desire to renegotiate it, that would not be something that we could do.
Okay. So, that, that figure is set.
That is correct. Ms. Lorenz, council packet, page 8-19 identifies each of the consultants and their share of this $80,000, and I believe in the course of the conversations to get to this point, I think we've been pretty detailed and had good conversations with FAR about scope of work to make sure it fits within our budget, and each of these can, sub consultants then bring, I would say, bring an interesting perspective to the project, including infrastructure, engineering, things like that, that we think will be very valuable at the point we're ready to move forward following the conclusion of the study.
Okay. You know, in hindsight, and maybe, maybe we can get this in the future going forward, I would have liked to seen a breakdown by component, maybe in addition to the breakdown by partner, but it would have been nice to see, you know, of the deliverables, what's, what costs, how the costs broke down, and it just wasn't prepared that way.
It, I mean, it somehow tracks that way, if you read the proposal, it breaks it into segments like the transportation analysis, and then you know Sam Schwartz is doing that analysis, so you can kind of start to put the numbers together. It's not laid out that way exactly, but you can kind of back into it. I will say that the consultant is aware of other studies that are ongoing or have been recently completed, that sort of thing, and there is no plan to, like, actually redo that. They're, they're going to be going more in-depth based on the specific circumstances of Uptown South. So, there would be no point in us asking them to redo it either, that would just be a waste of time and money. So, any additional work they do on parking will be specific to, if this type of commercial or residential is recommended in Uptown South, here's the kind of parking we think is suitable to that project. It's more specific.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
Please call a roll.
Mr. McCarthy? Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
No.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. The item is approved, that concludes our new business tonight. Before taking a motion for adjournment, are there comments or concerns? Mr. Preston?
Trying to be quick, I just want to wish a good end of the academic year to students at Illinois State as well as others at Heartland, Wesleyan, and K-12, as those are right around the corner too, but I know this is finals week for ISU, and always a lot of energy when the students are in town, and a little less during the summer when they're not, but anyway, want to, wanna extend my best for upcoming graduations, for those it's applicable to, and just end up school year.
Further? Ms. Lorenz?
I'm gonna ask that you indulge me, I wasn't here two weeks ago, so it's been a while since you've heard from me. I do have a concern. It's gonna take me a few minutes, okay? Four, five? All right, I'll try to speak quickly, and I wanna speak in metaphors. I have a concern that I've raised before, that I think it's timely to raise again, and that concern is a call for us to work better together. I've probably said this on at least one or two other occasions. We have exactly one year left together. A year from today, there could be three new faces coming onto this council. Let's redouble our efforts to try to get along. And I am push, I am not pointing a finger at anybody, and if it does seem that way, please remember the old adage, when you point a finger at somebody, how many fingers are you pointing back at yourself? So, I'm gonna take more than 50%, maybe even 51% of the blame on some of my concerns that I'm sharing here tonight. I haven't been doing a good enough job on working well with my colleagues. I could do better. I could do better at reaching out and building consensus and collaboration and building relationships. I'll leave it up to you, in your own heart of hearts, to my colleagues, to evaluate how well you think you're doing. I'm not pointing a finger at you, like I said, I'm pointing three fingers back at myself. But I think it's pretty evident, week in or every other week in and week out, when we assemble here, the people sitting out here in this audience have to endure some pretty messy conversations, some of which I've contributed to. And my metaphor is this, that I want us to think about. And I ask you to go back to your high school chemistry lab and your beaker full of clear liquid, remember that? And you were doing a, an experiment on solutions, mixing two liquids together. And you got the little dropper, and you squeezed in a different color, a different density, or a different consistency into your clear beaker full of water. And what happened? Kind of just, those drops just kind of wound their way down, suspended awkwardly, kind of made it look a little disjointed. And you could step, stand back and look at your beaker and say, well, it's mostly clear, in fact, the majority of it might even be clear, and you could leave it that way. And I'm gonna say that that's a metaphor for a 4-3 vote. Nobody on this council or any council likes a 4-3 vote. They're messy, and they're ugly. Sometimes, they have to happen, though. But with a little work, what can you do to your beaker with the, with the dye hanging, drifting its way into the water? You could get your little stirrer, and could stir it up. Takes some work, doesn't it? Creates some energy. To mix the particles together, so they work better together, and so you got a new solution, a more cohesive, cooperative solution, maybe with some new attributes, attributes, maybe a different viscosity, maybe a different look and color and transparency, transparency in the truest of words, not government, color, not opaqueness. So, you've got something different, maybe different good, maybe you lost some things in it, but maybe you gained some things in it. I'm here to say that when you swirl that up and you get the particles all working together, that's a metaphor for a 5-2 vote, or maybe even a 6-1 vote, for heaven's sake, maybe a 7-0 vote. Not that they have to happen either. I had the interesting experience two weeks ago of only listening to this event. I couldn't see you, all I could see was the screen, the little square of the mayor, and myself. I had to just listen, only listen to the speakers here and to all of you. And you know what? You sounded different. I learned something better by listening better. That's why I- That's why I know I've got work to do. So my request, once again, is to work better together and to double down on that. We've got a year left together. Let's do better. And to our mayor, our chair, and our city manager, I know we're a bunch of, whatever analogy you want to use, we're a tough group to corral, but we need your leadership. We really do. We need your work to stir us together so that we find a better state than what we I think that's all I have.
Other comments? Mr. Nord?
Thank you. Got something in the mail today. Everybody else, well, most people will probably be getting one too. This is your property tax bill. So I crunched some numbers and just wanted to share these. Of the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight municipal groups that tax us, some of them are taxing us less. So Binward went down, they're taxing us 2.27% less than what they did last year. The airport is less, Normal Township is less. So of the ones that went up, the, there's a road tax for fixing roads. That was the least amount that we get charged dollar-wise. That one went up $3. But for a percentage, that took it up 4%, so I'm throwing that one out because that's not really, you know, comparable. But the town of Normal, we are the highest taxing, or we have the highest increase. And then we've got McLean County would be the next, then Heartland, the library, and then Unit 5. So I've heard pretty much, I believe, everyone talk about how we're concerned about property tax for our constituents. Well, these are raw numbers, anybody can do this math. I mean, I, I would love it if I was wrong, you know, and ours went down, but, you know, it just didn't. So how we vote, even if it's on something as minors, $80,000, that all equates to tax burden on our residents. And if we're going to talk about being fiscally responsible and wanting to reduce that burden on our constituents, then we need to think about every vote that we take and whether it's going to make that burden worse or if it's going to lighten the burden, because it's hard to really tell constituents that we're fighting for them when we keep voting to increase their tax burden. Another interesting thing, if you go to the Economic Developments or the VNEDC's website, they have a cost of living calculator there. They've got pre-put in there Bloomington-Normal, and then you can plug in quite a few other towns in the area, and it will say whether it costs less to live there or more. So compared to Bloomington-Normal, some places around us, Champaign, 12% less. Decatur, 17%. And this is just off their website, so I'm not saying whether it's right or wrong, I assume that they vetted this. Peoria, 12%. Springfield happens to be the same. Chicago was the only one where it costs more to live. And if you plug in St. Louis, St. Louis, it actually costs less. So just keep that in mind, because I know the constituents that reach out to me, and we each have, you know, different demographics that reach out to each of us. The bulk of what I hear is, "Love it here, but at some point, I can't afford to live here." And they don't want to move, but we're going to tax them out if we keep, if we don't change our focus. Thank you.
Mr. Nord, I'm not going to go back and forth with you. There's a saying that I use, that you can waterboard numbers to get them to tell you anything you want them to tell you. I, I would disagree with a lot of the assumptions you made. I'm just not going to get into tit for tat, but I completely disagree with your analysis on what you presented tonight. Ms. Smith?
Just a heads up to any families with special need family members, the SOAR registration for the summer programs opens up this Thursday morning at 7:00 a.m. on the website. There's a variety of, of opportunities to have your family member engaged in recreational activities. And also a, a call out, if anyone has family members that are looking for work, Easter Seals Timber Point Camp is in dire need of staff members to make sure they can deliver the camps that individuals have reserved for their family members, and they've, they've got a waiting list that can't be opened up until they get enough staffing. So if, if you have any individuals in your household that are looking for some summer employment with Timber Point, it's the toughest job you'll ever love. Thank you.
Further? Motion for adjournment, please.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. We are adjourned, thank you.